Hello, everybody. Okay. Give me just a second. I'm trying to co-host everybody.
It worked. Hello.
For planning board members, if you wouldn't mind, yep, great. David, thank you for putting your PB behind your name. So I'm running a little bit late. Be great to do that and keep letting everybody in. Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Hi, Jean.
Hey, Cindy.
Let me know if you need me to do anything.
Okay, I think we're good for right now. Hello to members of the community who are here. We appreciate being here for the planning board meeting. We would ask that you keep your video monitors turned, video cameras turned off, and we would appreciate if folks can change their names to a full name. I see one with just a telephone number and one with Chris. It would be awesome if you could name yourselves with a full name. Thanks so much. We'll get started in a few minutes.
Curtis, if you could change yours to Curtis. Never mind.
Got it. He's all over it.
He's got it.
There we go. Hello, I'm sorry. I thought I had already made you a co-host. No worries. Okay. Folks with Reynolds, I know that you're here for an item in a little bit. I'm going to ask you to, if you wouldn't mind, to turn on your video off once we get started with the meeting and until we're ready for that item. That'd be great. I can do that. Oh, right. It's the other way around. Cindy, do you have the initial rule slides as usual?
I do.
Okay. We'll do our usual drill.
You know, you made me co-host. I don't seem to have the ability to rename people and I don't have some of the capabilities for some reason. I don't know. Just in case you ask me to do something, I'm not that I don't want to. I just might not be able to.
Oh, look, he is. I have built-in shelf envy from all these people on Zoom with all these lovely bookshelves around them.
Not real. Mine's fake.
I'll show you my real one. Maybe I will.
Hi, look, Peter.
Sorry, I was dealing with some sign that came out something about my audio. So I was in the middle of trying to do something. Hopefully you can hear me.
We can hear you.
Oh, good.
There we go. Okay, let's see. All right. Okay, before we get started, I'm going to ask our applicant to unmute and make sure that we can get our get their sound and such working. Can you all hear us at this point now?
Can you hear any of us?
We can hear you.
Please give us a head nod if you can hear. Yeah, they can hear us. Shoot, we aren't hearing anything from you.
Okay, let me make you a co-host. Let me try this and see if we can, if that will help.
Our volume working. Could you say something?
Is that working now? Can you hear us?
We are good. Thank you.
Okay, good. I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn your camera off again for a little bit until we, until that time of the agenda. Great.
Thank you very much for helping us. Thanks.
Yep. Better to get that worked out now.
What button did you hit? You kind of stick your button in there?
It's nice to see you all.
Thanks, Peter.
I wonder what it's going to be like to actually have the energy and if we're, you know, back in rooms with together at some point. It might be overwhelming.
You mean in the year 2021?
Or two.
Or two.
Yeah, we may be able to finally take Brian Bowen out for his good farewell.
Yeah, right.
I still have a, we still have a gift to give him and everything. So, yeah.
Pretty sure he triggered the secret lair under holiday that he made sure it was built into that development. He's deep underground by now.
I told him this is all his fault. He left in March. COVID came out in March. This is all his fault. He disrupted the universe.
Okay.
Now I just saw the email from Charles about Shannon and we won't be able to take Shannon out either.
If you need me, I'll be here crying, Dave.
I know. Well, I'll be crying.
Oh, no.
At least she's close by.
Yeah.
Lisa, can you not be unmuted? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. What are we waiting for?
Sarah, are you sick?
Um, I don't know. Exactly.
Well, all our board members are here, so.
Are we ready to start up and get into the rules?
I think so.
Is that right, Jean?
I think that's right. Yep.
Okay, great. And I'm gonna call, I'm gonna call to order, but first of all, good evening, everybody. And welcome to the City of Boulder's Planning Board Meeting, Thursday, July 16th, 2020. I'm going to gavel the meeting to order. And I'm going to immediately turn it over to Jean Gatzza, to who is our moderator for tonight and our Zoom operator. And Jean, if you can go over the rules for tonight's meeting.
Yep, I'll start and then Cindy will put up a slide. Thank you for the introduction. I'm Jean. If you're, if you use the chat, please use the chat to let me know about technical issues. I'll be the one monitoring that. And please bear with us. We seem to learn something new about Zoom every single meeting, so hopefully everything will go smoothly. Cindy, you wanna, we have, we have some very specific rules about how we conduct these online meetings, and then I'll talk a little bit about how we'll do the public hearing.
Sure, I'm going to share my screen here. Everyone can see that? Do you have blue screen that says City of Boulder?
We can see it.
Okay, great. As, you know, we're all getting familiar with these, but we do need to go over these rules of decorum every meeting. Just these rules were passed down by the city council. And so we're pleased to have you join us tonight. We're just, these rules were here to strike a balance between transparency, engagement, and online security. So we ask that everyone try to follow these rules. This meeting is, of course, to conduct this business by the City of Boulder. Activities such as Zoom bombing or anything else that would disrupt or dislay otherwise interfere with this, this meeting are prohibited. The time for speaking or asking questions may be limited, usually to three minutes is our standard. No person shall speak except when recognized by the person presiding, and no person shall speak for longer than the time allotted. We will have a timer up, so you'll be able to see your time. Each person shall register to speak at the meeting using that person's real name. That's why Jean asked for your name. Any person believed to be using a pseudonym will not be permitted to speak at the meeting. So if we do see people come into the meeting that says Tom's iPad or, you know, crazy girl, we're going to ask you to change that to your real name. No video will be permitted except for city officials, employees, and invited speakers such as applicants. Other, all others will participate by voice only. The person presiding at the meeting shall enforce these rules by muting anyone who violates any rule. The chat function, which Jean just mentioned, is enabled and will be used for individuals to communicate with the moderator. It will not be used by our board members. It's so, it is not related. It's so, it's only for technical questions. It should not be used for any questions or comments related to any public hearing or items that they are discussing. The board will not be seeing these, anything that goes on in chat. Only the host and individuals designated by the host will be permitted to share their screen during this meeting. And that is that.
Great. Thank you, Cindy. I will just note that we don't have a sign up for the public hearing tonight, so if anyone would like to speak under open comment or under the public hearing item, you can use the raise hand function. So to do that, the raise hand button is in the participants box, which can be found in the menu. You hover over the top or the bottom of your screen and then click on the participant icon. When the box opens, you'll see the raise hand button at the bottom. When you click that button, it'll indicate that you'd like to participate in open or public comment. I don't think anybody's on the phone, but if they are, they could press star nine to raise their hand. And I think that's, Cindy, what else? Do we have anything else? I think the only other things are for folks to please keep your video cameras off. And even during the public hearing, we can't, we're not allowing video cameras on for members of the public. For applicants, we'll, we'll turn your video on when it's the appropriate time during that item. I think that's it.
Okay, thanks, Jean. So the second order of business is to approve our minutes. We have one set of minutes in our packet. They're the June 18th, 2020 minutes. They have been provided by Cindy and I assume amended by various members of the board. We have the final amendment in the packet tonight. Cindy?
Yes.
We do a roll.
Excuse me?
Did we do a roll call?
Yeah, we'll do a roll call for any vote on Zoom. So do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move to approve them.
Thank you, John. Any second?
Well, second.
Okay, I think I heard Lisa. So a motion by John Gerstle, a second by Lisa Smith. Is there any discussion to the motion? Okay, then the motion is to approve the June 18th, 2020 minutes. Take a roll call, vote. David Ensign?
Um, yes.
Sarah Silver?
Yes.
Don Gerstle?
Yes.
Peter Vitale?
Yes.
Lupita Montoya?
Yes.
And Lisa Smith?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so the minutes are approved seven to nothing. Next order is public participation. This is the time when we afford an opportunity for any member of the public to speak to any item that is not on the agenda for public hearing. Tonight's public hearing is regarding the 5600 Airport Road Zero, Airport Boulevard and Zero Belmont Drive. It's a, a annexation and site review and initial zoning. So you'll need to talk to that if you'd like to talk to that after that public hearing. We also have a fix-up ordinance to Title IX, which if you'd like to speak to, you need to speak to after that. But if you have any other item that you want to speak to, now's the time. Do we have any people signed up at all for public participation?
I'm seeing no hands raised at the moment, so if folks would like to speak, please raise hand.
Give them a sec. Okay?
See no hands.
Okay. Then we'll move on to discussion of dispositions, planning board call-ups and continuations. We have one item, which is a call-up item for a standard wetland permit, WAT 2020 dash four zeros and a six for 6949 Winchester Circle Development and Stormwater Mitigation. Does anybody want to call that item up or need to ask any questions regarding that item? Okay, seeing none, that item will not be called up. So we're going to jump right into our first public hearing item. The agenda title is a public hearing in consideration of the following requests related to a site at 5600 Airport Boulevard. One, recommendation on an application to annex a 4.87 acre parcel at Zero Airport Boulevard and a 1.03 acre parcel at Zero Belmont Drive with initial zoning designations of industrial general IG and public P, LUR 2018 dash triple zero 59. And the second piece of this item is a site review for the construction of 111,645 square foot research office and laboratory building on an existing industrial campus. The building would be three stories and 45 feet in height, 231 parking spaces to be provided in surface parking and on an elevated parking deck. That's case number LUR 2018 triple zero 60. Before I turn it over to staff, let me ask if any member of the planning board has any disclosures that they would like to make regarding this matter. So please raise your hand if you'd like to make any disclosures of any experte communications or other issues that you feel the need to disclose. John Gerstle, please?
Yes, no experte communications, but I've walked around the area several times just to become familiar with it.
Thank you. David Ensign?
Yes, I disclosed this last time. It, it isn't really necessary, but I wanted to make sure people knew that I had an office at 5330 Airport Road, just a couple buildings down from here from 2002 to 2010. So I'm pretty familiar with the area from that experience. I have no relationship with that, with this office park at this time and no reason why I can't be fully objective. And I've also done site tours.
Thank you. Okay, well, if there are no other disclosures going once, going twice. Okay, then I'm going to turn it over to Charles Farrow. Charles, if you want to take it away for the staff presentation, please?
Thanks very much, members of the board. I'm actually going to turn it over to Sloan Walbert. She is served as the case manager on this and she'll present staff's analysis to the board this evening.
Hey, thanks, Charles and Harmon. Can everyone see the presentation?
Yep, looks great.
All right, good. So as you described, the proposal tonight is for an annexation and site review. It involves the construction of a new building that would house light industrial uses. Just as a quick overview, I'll cover the review processes necessary, the surrounding context. I'll cover the proposed project. Bring up some key issues for discussion and then end with the staff recommendations for the board. So in terms of review process, in order to develop the property, it must be, the southern portion must be annexed to the city and zone for industrial development. And annexation requires a public hearing before Planning Board, who will make a recommendation to city council whether or not the annexation should be approved and the terms, conditions, and zoning that should be applied. In terms of site review, the proposal exceeds the thresholds of five acres or 100,000 square feet of floor area in both the IG and IM zone districts. A concept plan was submitted and reviewed by Planning Board in 2018. And now they are completing their required site review. There are two modifications that are being proposed through site review, both a step-back modification and nearly 11% parking reduction. The proposal was also reviewed by the Design Advisory Board and the Open Space Board, which was described in the staff memo. In terms of public notification, the proposal has met all requirements of the land use code. There was a written notice sent to property owners within 600 feet. Also, a sign was posted on the property, and we have not received any public comments on these proposals. And so the 9.9 acre site is located in East Boulder. It's just southeast of the Boulder Municipal Airport and at that easternmost terminus of Airport Boulevard. The site consists of two unplatted parcels to the south and one plotted lot fronting on airport. The northernmost parcel is approximately four acres, which was annexed into the city in 1990. The southern parcels are currently under the jurisdiction of Boulder County. And the Boulder, in left hand, a north Boulder farmer stitches and a multi-use path run along the south and east sides of the site. And so in terms of the comprehensive plan, the property is located in planning areas one, two, and three. The northern parcel, as I described, is within the city limits and is located within area one. The southern parcels are located within areas two and three. Area two refers to land that is under county jurisdiction, but where annexation can be considered consistent with the comprehensive plan policies. And area three is located in the county, but is intended to either preserve existing rural land uses in character or to maintain the option of future service area expansion. So in terms of the land use map, the the majority of the property within the city boundaries and the northernmost portion of the parcels to the south are designated as light industrial on the land use map. The southern portion is designated as open space. That's the areas covering the ditches and to the south of the ditches. And in terms of zoning, the portion within the city is zoned as industrial manufacturing, which I'll describe in a little more detail later in the presentation. The property is developed with two one-story buildings constructed in 1995. The eastern building is set at a lower grade than the western building. The parcels within the county are undeveloped and total approximately six acres. The overall site has pretty substantial grade changes from the high point at the northwest corner to the low point on the southeast edge of the site. And there are also steep slopes along the ditches and multi-use paths. There are pretty extensive views from that developable portion of the site proposed to be annexed, including to the foothills and also over to Belmont View. And so properties to the north and west have been developed in a business park-style development. To immediately to the west is the former AstraZeneca facility, which was for research, manufacturing and warehouse uses. As I described, those ditches run along the south end and an existing multi-use path. Beyond the city boundaries, the San Lorenzo Mobile Home Park is located to the south and city-owned property and fish ponds are located to the east. The site is located adjacent, as I mentioned, to open space properties, which are managed by OSMP. The land immediately adjacent is currently leased for cattle grazing and other agricultural uses. So in terms of the annexation, they are requesting annexation by petition as provided by state law. They are requesting industrial general zoning for the portions to remain in private ownership and public zoning for the area of lands that would be dedicated to the city for open space purposes. As part of the annexation package, a provision has been included that allows for a floor area transfer from that northern IM portion to that southern IG portion, as long as the development is consistent with the site review plans. Staff did forward a updated annexation agreement for your review, which has some changes from what was included in the planning board packet. They're mostly clerical, but there are some changes to timing as well. So proposed annexations that have additional development potential have to demonstrate community benefit consistent with the comprehensive plan. And that's intended to offset the negative impacts of additional development within the Boulder Valley. As part of this proposal, they are proposing to dedicate 1.6 acres to the city for open space purposes. The site does include an existing structure, which would be removed. They're also proposing payment of one and a half times the affordable housing commercial linkage fee. And the intent of that fee is to address affordable housing needs generated by jobs that would be created by this building. And I sort of tried to outline what, an estimate of what that fee would be at the one and a half times rate. It does increase yearly, but caps out in 2121, or 2021, not in 100 years. Sorry about that. So the proposal in terms of land uses is a light industrial building that would be suitable for uses like research and development facilities, testing labs, technical offices or manufacturing facilities. The two buildings to the north would remain and contain light industrial uses currently. Parking would be shared across the site for all three buildings. 323 spaces are proposed. They're provided a surface parking, under building parking and also on a raised parking deck, and that amounts to a 10.8% parking reduction. There's also 108 bike parking spaces to be provided across the site. So in terms of site layout, the layout of the streets and the orientation of the building is driven largely by the existing grade changes across the site. The existing access points are not proposed to change. And due to that grade change, the buildings and vehicular parking are located on multiple levels. The raised parking deck would provide parking access to the second level of the building as well as a front entry plaza, which would address Airport Boulevard. That's what's shown on the screen. They're also proposing a defined area for food truck parking to serve the site and the surrounding sites, which don't have a lot of services in that area, and also some seating areas. Water detention and water quality are proposed on that southwest corner of the parcel or the parcel that's going to remain in private ownership. They're also proposing stair access ramp and seating areas, which would interface with that existing multi-use path to the south. That's what's shown on the screen there. There's that detention pond. In terms of building design, the proposed building is contemporary with flat roofs, three stories, 45 feet in heights. Due to that topography, this building would appear as two stories from the streets, but would be three stories from the open spaces and multi-use paths to the south. In terms of key issues, the first would be whether it meets the comprehensive plan policies. And as described in the memo, staff finds that the project is consistent with the goals, objectives and recommendations of the comprehensive plan. It's consistent with the land use designations and policies concerning land use, light industrial areas and uses, site design, open space and natural features. Staff also reviewed the annexation petition and finds that it is consistent with the statutory requirements. Staff finds the annexation consistent with comp plan policies, as I just described, as well as those specifically concerning annexation. The annexation agreement has been written to enhance the physical, social and economic assets of the community. Staff finds that the annexation respects existing lifestyles and densities. It is located within an existing business park. The dedication of land would permanently preserve lands with open space values, which would provide significant community benefits as well as that one and a half times of the linkage fee. Housing is not proposed on the site. However, the revenues from those fees would, could be used to support the creation of additional affordable housing within the city. In terms of the proposed zoning, the area of land intended to be dedicated to the city has a proposed zoning of public. Staff finds that appropriate, given that the land would be deeded to the city and the area would have no urban density associated with it. In terms of the portion to remain in private ownership, the applicant is proposing IG. I've shown the descriptions on the screen there. In terms of intent, they're pretty similar or there's nuance, the differences between them. There are slightly more allowances in the IGs on districts for light industrial uses, which include public and private office uses, providing social services. As well as that, the intensity of development in IG district is greater with a 0.5 maximum FAR versus the 0.4, which is allowed in the IM district. All other intensity and form and bulk standards are identical. During the public hearing for the concept plan in 2018, the Planning Board did provide some input on the proposed IG zoning and the majority of the board found that the IG zoning would be appropriate and could provide for a greater diversity of uses and would be consistent with the surrounding area and also the underlying land use designation. It's also a logical extension of the existing map with IG zoning located to the west within Belmont Industrial Park. So in terms of consistency with the site review criteria, as described in the memo, staff finds that it does meet all applicable site review criteria. The project is compatible and conceptual with the existing character. The general layout of the development is appropriate, given those topographical constraints and the existing access drives and parking. In the immediate context, there are two and three story buildings, such that the proposed height, mass and scale would be consistent with this context. The applicant has given consideration to minimizing scenic impacts to the open space areas and multi-use paths. They're using retaining walls that are terraced to reduce visual impact. Staff also finds the amount of parking is appropriate, given the limited access to transit, distance to services and also access to that existing multi-use path. And so in, to wrap it up, staff recommends the Planning Board recommends a City Council approval of the annexation and initial zoning with the following motion. I will note that I did update this from the memo to reflect that new annexation agreement, which was forwarded. And staff also recommends approval of the site review application with the following motion. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Sloan. Appreciate that. Now, Jean, do we have a raised hand function for planning board members in this, this meeting format?
We don't.
Okay, so I'm just going to ask planning board members to raise your hand physically. And if you have any questions, please do so. Hey, John, question for staff?
Yes. Two things. One, I see that there's a request to diminish the 12-foot setback along the west side of the property. And I'm just wondering whether contact has been made with the property owner affected by that and how that has been considered by staff.
So you are correct. They are asking for a setback modification there. As I sort of described, they're pretty limited by the topography and what the developable portion of the property is. So that modification just allows them to have more flexibility in terms of design. The modification is requested through site review, so they're not required to gain approval from an adjacent property owner. I also think that the existing property owner is AstraZeneca, so I'm not sure what the future plans for that are, but we could certainly ask the applicant.
Well, I'm just wondering because I think it would be good to ask the applicant, but I see in the paper that that's been sold to a different company recently. So I'm just wondering to what degree they are informed about what's happening right next to them.
Yeah, I don't know if, how informed they are about these applications, but I will say that the analysis is based on the site review criteria in this case, which doesn't require approval from an adjacent property owner.
Okay, thank you. The other, oh, sorry, Harmon. I didn't mean to keep asking here. If somebody else has another question, they should go ahead.
Don't see any hands yet, John. Why don't you just go ahead and ask?
Yeah, the other question was with respect to the revision that, that Hella sent out this afternoon about the conditions of annexation. And I was particularly interested in the one that in the, in the proposed change that would allow the city manager to to make changes in the, in the conditions of annexation and the construction arrangements. And I wondered if you could give us some of the background of that.
Yeah, I have to, okay, I have to do it for a while. One of the conditions of the annexation agreement is that the project go through a subdivision and then it sets forth some of the requirements that we expect, which is a pretty typical condition that we also typically have part as, as part of the site review conditions. In this case, I added, I had proposed some language that would give the city manager with the wordy to modify what was required in there. And the reason for that was that in the past, we've had these conditions and then as the plans move forwards and get ready for building permits, sometimes there are amendments to the site reviews that come up that have to be approved through the process. But if the site review as approved is referenced in the annexation agreement, then even though this may have to go to the board to approve the design change, if it's referenced in the annexation agreement, we may also have to amend the annexation agreement, which then would require a process that involves both City Council and the Planning Board. So I wanted to give a little bit of the way to allow those changes to occur just through the site review approval without having to amend the annexation agreement. Does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Hella. Does, John, David, go ahead.
Oh, okay. I was just looking at the OSMP review that allows dedication of up to 24 acres of open space to be dedicated. And this proposal is, the annexation agreement results in 1.6 acres. And I just was a little, just wondering if you could explain, will, will there be additional acres or is just the language just allows for that much, you know, above for leeway?
Yeah, so annexation is a negotiation between the applicant and the city. And in reviewing what the different options for community benefit would be, they proposed some additional possible dedications of parcels that they own in the area. And that went before the Open Space Board for their consideration. We do have Bethany Collins, I believe, on the line if she has any feedback on or any input on what the board discussed.
Can you guys hear me? Sorry, I'm having problems on mute.
Yes, thank you.
I won't do video because that messed everything up before. So this, the, the additional acreage did come before our board and while our resource staff and department staff was, was fairly interested in the additional acreage, which we currently have a conservation easement on. It is directly to the east. The board did place in their, in their motion, and I believe that's been provided, that the, they identified that because the property potentially has restoration, substantial restoration requirements, although, you know, as identified by staff, some of it is self restoring. And those costs could be, you know, anywhere from, from zero to $500,000. They, they kind of put any consideration of the, the community benefit of that acreage and any ask of additional monies from the applicant into Planning Board and potentially City Council's realm. And then the applicant opted with that kind of unknowing, obviously dollar amount and just unknowing way of proceeding to pull out that, that offer in their community benefit package and, and go back to the original, what you, what you all saw in the concept plan and what we had been discussing prior to this, you know, potential just, just weighing community benefit ideas back to the, the 1.5 acres you guys see now.
Oh, well, thank you, Bethany. That totally explains everything and fills in the gaps. I just couldn't quite piece all that together from what I was reading. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Thanks, Bethany. Any other planning board members with a question for staff? All right. Seeing none, Sarah, did you want to say something? Okay, then I'm going to kick it back over to Sloan. And Sloan, I think it's probably up to you to get the applicant presentation going.
Yep, just give me one minute to pull it up.
And under our rules, the applicant has 15 minutes to make their presentation. So I don't want to put a timer up on the screen, so I'm just going to keep that time on my watch. my watch.
Sorry, having some issues. Hang on a second.
So I think the folks at WW Reynolds are unmuted, and you can turn on your video camera if you would like. And also Charlie Hager.
Okay, I have the presentation up, so you guys can take it away.
All right, we're all set. Thank you, Sloan. Appreciate your presentation, your very thorough presentation, and to you and staff for all the great work you've been doing. I'm Jeff Winger, 1375 Walnut Street with the WW Reynolds Companies. Good evening to the board and city staff. It's great to be with you again, even though we're virtually meeting in these challenging times. But for our presentation tonight, I'm here with my associate from WW Reynolds, Dave Bacon, as well as our architectural team from P E H Architects, Peter Heinz and Nathan Palatsky. Got to give a little background on not only our company, but also the Lake Center Business Park, because that's, I think, a critical component of how this all fits in. Go to the next slide, if you don't mind, Sloan. So WW Reynolds Company was founded in 1966 by Bill Reynolds. Over that time, we've developed over 4 million square feet in Boulder. We've got a few of those properties that are listed here. I think it's interesting, in fact, that Bill still owns the original property he developed in 1968, a little property on Pearl Street. That just shows, you know, commitment to the community and what we've done over the years and what we continue to do going forward. Next slide. And of course, some of these might be redundant from Sloan's, but of course, Lake Center Business Park that we're talking about, it's about three miles from downtown Boulder. Next slide. This is a little bit more of a focus on just the Lake Center Business Park. It's 68 acres today with the addition of the six that will be annexing through this in the site review approval. We'll go up to 74, and there are 12 separate developable parcels in the business park. Next slide. A bit of history on the business park itself. So this was in mid-1980s, Bill Reynolds' partner had a vision for, it was really an unruly plot, land that was adjacent to the little Boulder Municipal Airport. He had a vision to create this industrial park primarily to account for and take care of the great expansion at that time of not only tech companies, but also biotech that was starting to really grow in Boulder area. So in 1990, the land was annexed and subdivided to create what we saw as the Lake Center Business Park. At the time, it neatly addressed the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan in 1990, and interestingly today, it still really does nicely meet the requirements. I've got a couple of quotes up there from the directly from the comp plan, I won't read through those in light of time, just so we can get through all this. But again, we really are hitting that, and I know Sloan talked about that a little bit, too. Next slide. And it's home to some of Boulder's most respected and longstanding companies, and there's a number of them listed up here, and some of these have been original owners from the 1990s that acquired land and developed those. Some are tenants in some of the buildings up there, but again, longstanding, and it's really quality tenants that have occupied the Lake Center Business Park. Next slide. So transitioning to the project in front of you tonight, we've already seen this, but that's the site we're looking at. What this location really does expand upon the 30-year history and uses in the park. So it provides a rare opportunity to expand companies in the park, as well as other startup and growing Boulder companies outside of the park. Just a few, to name a few, AGC Biologics, which, this is the company, John, that you were asking about, that did make the acquisition of the AstraZeneca site just to the west of our facility. The city actually had a pretty good investment in that to try to make that happen, so I think this really provides a good opportunity to, for the future, for them to be successful in this area with a potential expansion space. Somalogic, who has expressed interest, a growing company in town, we've had conversations with them in the past. And can we avoid another potential missed opportunity like Blue Canyon Technologies, who had moved out of this area just a few months ago, really, because they couldn't get adequate space in the area? The site also preserves and promotes industrial and R and D space that's directed by the comp plan. It further responds to demands for larger floor plates in industrial and R and D buildings, and it's in a very appropriate location for those type uses in the park and in an area that really doesn't have impact on adjacent neighbors or other community members. It's really setting what we're doing here to a new design standard for the business park and what we're trying to achieve here. It's also creating great permeability and connections, not only in the park, but to areas outside of the park. We're attempting to provide some amenities that don't exist there today. Next slide. So it's been a long road we've been on since we started working on this 10 years ago. We went in for the comp plan, moved from Area 3 to Area 2, and we went through a concept review that was two and a half years ago, in actually almost three years ago now, September of 2000, or excuse me, June of 2018. Wait, I missed my dates. We had a site review application, we had a dab review, and yes, we did go through four separate resubmittals, and we had countless hours that we worked with staff to get through all those, answering many, many questions, working through many, many issues. And we are here today. So the staff has done an amazing job working with us through all those issues to get to a project that really is a better project, much better project today than it was when we saw you last time at the concept review. So with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Dave Bacon to talk about some of the changes we've made since that concept review and where we are today.
All right, thanks, Jeff. Dave Bacon, WW Reynolds Companies, work with Jeff here on the development team. As you can see, we've been working on this for quite some time, and what I'd like to do here is kind of outline some of the major changes we've made throughout this process. So Sloan, if you could go to the next slide. Thank you. So I know some of you weren't on the planning board when we went through concept review, so I thought this may be beneficial to show you the top two images, a couple of images from that concept review submittal. I think one of the things you'll see right off the bat is, we had proposed a phase two, which was really a second story on the existing buildings to the north. And we decided not to do that for a couple of reasons, the major reason being that we've got some long-term tenants up there, we just weren't sure when that phase two was gonna happen. And in addition, we kind of looked into what it would take to park and put the parking structure on there, put the additional structure on those buildings, and just technically, it was gonna be hard to do. So when we took the phase two off, we actually saw that, as a result, the site's actually a little bit less busy and less confusing. So we think that was a beneficial thing overall for the site. Another thing we heard a lot about is site permeability and connectivity. If you look at the two images that we had, a concept plan, it's really an internally-focused campus. And so one of the things we heard was, this is at the end of the Cul-de-sac Airport Boulevard, it abuts some great open space and a multi-use path, and we need to really take advantage of that and also work on pulling people, not just tenants, but people from the surrounding buildings through the site. So I'll let PH talk a little bit more about the details of the permeability connections later, but want to mention that now. Another thing that we heard from planning board, from a few members, were, this would be a great spot for a food truck pad, and you heard Sloan kind of talk about that earlier. It really is a food desert up there. And so the idea is to have a place for surrounding buildings, again, not just our tenant, be able to walk and enjoy some food here. Next slide, please. And then one of the things we heard from nearly everybody on planning board was, really need to take advantage of and recognize that we're close to this open space, and how does our building interact with that open space? And did we really do enough research on the visual impacts of our site? And so what we did was, we took some time to walk around the site, walk the path. And this slide here shows an image, it's a sheet from our site review package that I'm kind of proud of our team for pulling this together. It shows the different viewpoints as you move along that path. So we really took some time to understand and evaluate how maybe we could even make a positive impact on the existing path. The image that you're seeing, the view on the upper right, is a pocket park. Again, we'll, at PH, kind of get into details of it later, but this is an example of something we call the touchdown point, somewhere for someone who just wants to take a break, whether it be a tenant or someone walking along the path, can sit down, have a conversation, eat some food from the food truck, whatever that may be. Next slide, please. So after we tried to take into account some of the board's feedback at concept review, we initially submitted a site review package, and that package had these set of elevations you see on the left. And again, I'll let PH really talk about what we did at dab, but I really want to show this slide because it shows kind of the evolution from the left side elevations to what we now have on the right-hand side, which we believe is a much improved overall design aesthetic. Next slide, please. And then Jeff mentioned our four site review resubmittals. I don't expect anyone to be able to read the images here on this slide, but what I wanted to kind of convey is, through those four resubmittals, there was a lot of time spent on really technical aspects of the project, the easements, access easements, and details, even as detailed as storefront jams and how the construction connections came together. So some of that informed our design decisions, and between that and looking at drainage and retaining walls, there was a lot changed over those that I don't think really gets conveyed at these meetings. So I wanted to make an effort here to really appreciate the technical back and forth between our team and staff's team. Everybody did a great job. And with that, I'll turn it over to the P E H folks, who get to talk about the more fun and less technical aspects of the project.
Next slide, please. Good evening, Peter Heinz with P E H Architects. We get to talk about where we're at in July of 2020. And we are at the end of Airport Boulevard. It's a strange location with a bit of an urban flavor along the streetscape, and then a bit of a sensitivity to soft edges of open space along the other portions of the property. Next slide, please. Since the concept plan, we have worked with civil engineer, traffic engineers, to work on the poach holes through and around the building and the site to allow pedestrians, bicycles to get from their jobs, which are in the buildings along Lake Center Drive, to the open space path or back, or from the open space path to their jobs. So this slide shows all of the connections, how one can get from bike commuting to work through this property, how porous this property has become, to the to the Lake Center property. It also shows, for a bit of a scale review, the size of the annexation parcel relative to the size of parcel where this particular building is going. And it shows the two existing buildings in the lighter lighter blue to the east. So this hasn't been just a one architect project. Nathan Palatsky from our office is here to take you through the rest of the slides of this project. Nathan?
Thank you, Peter. Nathan Palatsky with P E H Architects. Sloan, could you go to the next slide? This slide focuses in on our building, and I want to point out some challenges here. As Sloan mentioned, the two existing buildings, the one off to the right in the back, the one that we're sort of standing over in the front, are separated by 10 vertical feet, which became a circulation and connection challenge for us as we worked through this business. But as you could see in the last slide, we've been able to provide a lot of connection points from the pathway down low all the way up to our new building. Another challenge with this campus was the new building being on the south end of the site. We wanted to improve the pedestrian experience and make it an intuitive wayfinding. So we've added some decorative colored concrete that brings you all the way from Airport Boulevard back to the entry of the building. And we've provided a lot of vegetation, touchdown spaces, gathering spaces, the food truck right there in the middle space, extensive landscaping with large-format boulders that increase the natural vegetation and plantings that we could provide in the area between the two parking lots. Sloan, the next slide, please. This is a view specifically for the pedestrians' point of view going towards the building. As you can see, we really tried to take that walkway and lead people directly into the entry. It's a covered entry from an automotive and a pedestrian standpoint. To provide some daylight, there is a light shaft to the right with potted trees and plants and more benches, improving gathering spaces and options for sunlight and shade throughout the property. Next slide. The view from the pathway, we've got lightweight materials, very durable aluminum. We've accented our each elevation with a picture frame glass wall. On the lower left, I want to point out, there's our pocket park, and you can begin to see the circulation that takes you from the park all the way up into the site, walking you past our bicycle parking as you approach the entries to each of the building. Next slide. And finally, again, a view from down on the path, the pedestrian park or the pocket park with highlighting these retaining walls that we had to build throughout the site because of the extensive grade changes. We tried to hide the parking, we tried to hide our retaining walls with large-format boulders and terraced walls, allowing for landscaping to give a more natural appearance along that pathway and reduce the visual impact of our new building. That's it from our side.
It's kind of funny, you were talking earlier about Brian and how, since he's left the board, you haven't had a chance to send him the gift. We snuck in a little sketch that he gave us when we when we presented to you in the concept plan, and we snuck it into our second slide tonight. I failed to mention it, but it was his sort of impetus, along with staffs throughout our process, that pushed us towards the pedestrian connections that we presented for you tonight. So with that, we're done with our presentation. Jeff, you want to wrap it up?
Yeah, no, thanks for everyone. We're here for questions. We've got Charlie Hager that has joined us remotely, as well as Chris McRanahan, Charlie from JVA for civil engineering questions, and Chris with the O C transportation, for any transportation questions that may come up. But we're here to answer any questions and look forward to working, going to the next steps on this.
Hey, great, thanks. Now's our time as planning board to ask the applicant some questions. I see John Gerstel's hands up. So, John?
Thank you. Yes, you heard my question about the setback along the western edge? Did I ask the staff? Could you comment on that and why you're asking for a variance and how much of one you want and why?
Yeah, so the change in setback was from 12 feet to 10 feet. And the communications with the adjacent property owner, I do not believe that we approached...
Well, so there's twofold, I think, why, and then to your question, John, I'll answer that, and then you can continue to. But we actually did talk with AstraZeneca some time ago, when they were in the midst of remodeling that location. We kind of presented this project to them to see if they had any interest in needing or using it as they went forward. Obviously, they left, and we have not been able to, since it's been such a short time since they closed, but talked with AG S Biological to see what their interest may be. But they are, they were aware of what we were doing on the site, to the question you asked. But the two-foot setback was, I think, to get into that, was to allow us to more comfortably be able to meet everything on there. As Sloan mentioned in the original presentation, there's a lot of slope and there's a lot of contour to the site. In order to fit everything on there, we got, we needed to squeeze and push back a little bit of everything, so that's why we asked for that setback, so that we could fit comfortably, parking, the access, the, all the points we needed to get to for circulation.
Thank you.
The board members' questions? If there are none, we'll go to public comment. John, another?
Yeah, one more. You mentioned that you were designing this to provide easy access to the to the multi-use path, and between the multi-use path and the street Airport Boulevard there. Is that something that will always be open to the public?
Yes, that was one of our big, big issues in what we tried to... Yes, that was one of our big issues in what we tried to create was the permeability, you know, at any time to the public. So yes, all these paths, all these connections, they don't go through any secure building. They're through an open area. So yes, there would be access to the, between Airport Boulevard and the bike path at any time.
Thank you.
Okay, last chance for planning board to ask applicant questions. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Jean Gatzza. Jean, if you would handle public comments to the extent that we have any, that would be great.
Will do, thanks, Harmon. Yep, and I'll just remind folks that we'll use the raise hand function for the public hearing. The raised hand button can be found in the participants box and you can click on that. I don't think we have anybody on the phone. But if we did, they can press star nine to raise their hand. I'd just like to remind folks that we'll have three minutes and Cindy will display the timer. And we'll ask you to just be respectful and just go with three minutes. Lynn, looks like, it looks like we've got one person with their, with your hand up. Lynn, I'm gonna go, I can, we do ask for folks to have full names displayed to be able to participate in the public hearings. Lynn, we, and I know that you've given me permission before to rename you. So I will do that before we start the public hearing. Are there any others? Okay, if not, we can go ahead and start. Lynn, I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Yeah, I've been trying to unmute myself. Yeah, I couldn't get on at the beginning because I've still been going over the city council meeting because of all the logistics for COVID and trying to streamline that for everyone to have all access to everything because this is going to go on for a long time and that's very important. So I don't really have any specific input to give on this project, although I love Soma Logic and I would support anything that they're doing. They put on this gold symposium every year, although they didn't this May. I'm sure they would add a lot to the COVID issue, actually. They're a fabulous group and I support anything they're involved with. But yeah, it was interesting seeing the evolution. I think the imagery was very well done for the concept plans and the changes. And that was really laid out nicely to understand it. I haven't been for the whole meeting, so I couldn't really give any specific recommendations. But thanks for submitting and that's it, done.
Thank you, Lynn. If anyone else would like to speak, please raise hand and I'll ask you to unmute. Okay, seeing none, Harmon, I'll turn it back to you.
Great, thanks, Jean. All right, so let's look at the key issues that are presented to us for our discussion. And the first key issue is a question. Does the project, on balance, meet the relevant goals and policies of the Boulder Valley Complan? So who would like to kick us off? Take a hand, a hand raise. David?
Sure. So I'll start out by just saying a few generalities. First of all, I don't see any concerns with regards to the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan, given the land use in this, for this area. It, as I go through the different criteria, it seems to match very well. Of course, there is the jobs housing imbalance, which is always a concern. But I know that there are hurdles to addressing that in industrial properties that are deeply within the industrial zone. So it would be hard to address that here. And it's great to see that we will be getting impact fees. The preserving local business I'll also touch on because that's in the complan. Thank you both the applicant and for the public for bringing up Soma Logic. It would be great to see local presences preserved. I will highlight three criteria. One is commitment to walkable and accessible city. I think that the food truck is a good response to that and was brought up in the concept review. And then we also, of course, you know, would be nice to see maybe a little more services in this area since there are so many businesses, but at least the food truck will help. And then, let me see, I think it's down after enhanced design. Sorry, there's circulation and linkage. So like the 2.26 and 2.41 criteria, talk about circulation. I actually do go back and look pretty carefully at the concept reviews when we get to site review to see what we said if I was in the room. And I agree that there has been a significant amount of improvement to the circulation here. If you didn't put that connection on the south side, mountain bikes would probably find some way to go down a little dirt path and it would be dangerous. And so having that connection on the south is great. And I think with both the ramp and the steps, it's great. And also the kind of more traditional multi-use path connection on the east. So that's fantastic. So those are my comments on B V C P.
Hey, thanks for all that. Any other planning board members want to add to what David said or disagree that the project does, on balance, meet the goals and policies of the complan? John?
Yeah, I think this does, I agree with David. I think in general, this does meet the relevant goals and policies of the complan.
Great. Any other specific comments that anybody wants to make about complan compliance? Or shall I just take a negative poll and see if there's anybody who doesn't believe that it meets? Yeah, why don't I do that? Is there any member of planning board that believes that the project, on balance, does not meet the relevant goals and policies of the Boulder Valley Complan? Is the board willing to move forward to key issue number two? Okay, seeing a bunch of heads nod. Okay, so this is a multi-part question. And it's, is the proposed annexation consistent with state statutes and Boulder Valley Complan policies, including policy 1.16 annexation? So we're looking at essentially statutory and plan compliance based on this annexation. I see John's hand is up.
Yeah, I think, I think it is consistent with the state statutes and B V C policies regarding annexation.
Sarah?
I also agree and I want to really express appreciation to the applicant for their voluntary offer to pay one and a half times whatever the linkage fee is when they get their building permit in order to address the community benefit of permanently affordable housing.
I'll chime in and say that I also think that the donation to the city of the 1.6 acres of land that's going to be zoned public and will be open space, even if it's a gift that might keep on giving between $0 and $500,000 worth of obligation to restore, you know, rather than fighting for additional density through change of the open space other, to just dedicate that strip of land to the city is a, is a nice move. And then just a thing I've noticed in the staff report, it seems like as long as I've been on planning board, there's been a missing "of" in the city's boilerplate for the statutory conditions for annexation. And so it reads in the fifth or sixth bullet, there is a community interest. And the statute says there is a community of interest. So the idea is that there's similar interests or a community of interest between the property proposed for annexation in the city of Boulder. And when you leave out the "of", people think that there has to be community interest in this annexation in order for it to be approved. And that's not what the statute says. So Charles, I'm looking at you. Could you please get that "of" in between community and interest in the county's boilerplate so that I can stop bugging you about this? Anybody else have anything to say about complan compliance with policy 1.16 in particular and state statutory compliance? Okay, can I take a negative poll then and ask the planning board, is there anyone who does not believe that the proposed annexation is consistent with state statutes and B V C P policies, including policy 1.16 annexation? Okay, then, let the record show that the board agrees with staff, that the annexation petition is in compliance with sections 3112104, 3112105, and 107 of CRS, and finds the application is consistent with the statutory requirements as affirmed by the criteria in our staff report and is also consistent with the relevant policies in our comprehensive plan. So let us move on to key issue number three. Is the initial zoning of industrial general IG and public P appropriate for the land proposed to be annexed? I'll take a hand. John, again?
Yeah, I think it does, it is appropriate to make an industrial general for the privately owned and, and public for the land that is to become open space.
Great. Any other discussion around that? Okay. All right, then, can I just take a negative poll and ask, is there anyone on the planning board that disagrees that the initial zoning proposed of industrial general and public are appropriate for the land proposed to be annexed? Okay, and seeing none. Let the record show that the board agrees with staff that the use and intensity controls of the IG district are consistent with complan policies and land use map designation and allow for compatible development with the surrounding area. And the initial proposed zoning of P for the OSMP portion to be dedicated to the city is appropriate for that area as well. So let's move on to key issue number four. And here maybe we'll, we'll dig in a little bit to the site review criteria. So this is, does the project meet the applicable site review criteria in section 9214H of the Boulder Revised Code? I'll take a hand. Any thoughts? John?
Well, I, I have a problem with the requested variance to the western setback. I, I think this is an issue that has not been adequately dealt with. I asked both staff and the applicant about it and didn't get any real reason why it was necessary. And so I'm unwilling to go along with that variance in the setback. But beyond that, I think it does meet the criteria.
Lisa?
I think it does meet the criteria. And then I guess I have a small bit of feedback and I'd welcome your guidance, Harmon, as I give that feedback on whether it's something I should give or not. And that is that the, the parking seems appropriate for the use for the location. Everybody will be driving there. And I also wanted to add just to the architects and kind of for future site use, to be thinking about how some of that space could eventually be repurposed or used otherwise because I do believe that perhaps not even in the coming decades, but in the near future, we'll, we'll see a reduced need for parking. And I'd just like architects and, and folks to be thinking about that as they move forward.
David, you'll need, there, good.
So I'll just expand on that a little bit. And we are being asked in the criteria to approve a parking reduction. I think it's a modest parking reduction and I think it's just, well justified in the packet. So I would highlight that. I also wanted in this section to also acknowledge that there were a lot of comments in advance, a little over two years ago, about the kind of welcoming aspect of approaching the building and that it seemed not so open and welcoming. And I feel that there has been an enormous amount of improvement on that. So that would be design related with the site criteria. And I did see that the DAB also had some recommendations that were taken quite seriously. So I kind of agree that there has been a lot of back and forth that's been very productive and resulted in a, in a better design. And I was sort of relieved to see that the phase two isn't something we need to worry about right now because I think that it will be more welcoming without that second story on the, on the buildings leading up to it. I'm not really, I guess personally, I'm not that concerned about the setback mainly because what's on the adjacent property right now is a driveway going along that side. I don't know that, you know, I think that there's been plenty of time for property owners to comment on that. We haven't received comments and it's only, it's two feet. So I don't, I wouldn't consider that a showstopper myself. I'd be interested in what other board members might think.
Any other board members?
Not on that topic, but I do have a top, a comment.
Go ahead, Peter.
I agree with everything that's been said. There was an aspect of the bill, of the design that worried me a bit. And I'm sure that from the inside, it looks great, but the pedestrian approach, I may be out of bounds here, but page 69 of 213, it's sheet number A105 on the architecture drawings, there's the, I was confused by the brick, the garden, the, the plantings in front of the building and then the, the large brick kind of proscenium arch. The use of the brick with the glass, there was something about the pedestrian entrance that I immediately thought I was an old Linens and Things or Bed Bath &amp; Beyond store. It seemed out of place. And I know that that entire, there's some large buildings and the AstraZeneca building has its own unique architecture and it felt like that was an opportunity to really shine above. That was really my only comment. And I try not to make comments too much on design since I'm not a designer, but that did strike me.
Thank you. Anyone else to make comments? Not seeing a lot of hands. I guess, you know, I, I think I'll jump in here about the setback. You know, when you're looking at a site this large and the developer comes forward asking for two feet where, you know, and a 10-foot setback where 12 is required, you know, one way to look at it is, they must have had a serious problem fitting their site plan in that, you know, after four site reviews and God knows how many work sessions with staff, they still couldn't manage to fit it in without a two-foot setback relief. And, you know, of course, the devil's advocate on that is, you know, it's a pretty big site. Why can't you fix it when you've got all that room and you've had all those chances? And so, you know, I looked in the application materials and I actually couldn't find any explanation for why the applicant is asking for a two-foot, two feet of relief from the required 12-foot setback. So at some level, I'm, you know, right with David that it's, it's just such a small amount on such a big site. You know, who's going to notice two feet? What's the difference between 10 and 12 when the project's built and the neighboring property owner hasn't commented? And, and at another level, I would love to hear some And at another level, I would love to hear some explanation that says that there was a really good reason why, after all this time and with all this physical space to play with, we still couldn't get the site to fit without asking for two feet. So, you know, at this time, at some time during deliberation, I think I'll ask the applicant to come back and provide some explanation to help us make our decision on that.
Well, I asked the applicant. I am very interested in that, and I hope that this time the applicant can get some basis for it.
Okay, any other comments on the site review criteria being met or not? Okay. Then before we get deeper into deliberation, as I can tell that John would like to make a motion to approve the site review with a condition that the setback be met. So let's have the applicant come back and see if they can explain why they're asking for a setback reduction.
Back on, can you hear us?
Yep, sure can.
So there's not one specific reason that points to the request to vary the setback. There's a variety of reasons. It started with the building design, the grid of the building. So the grid of the building is a very sensitive issue when it comes to designing an economical building. And inside the building, the grids are more or less specified for maximum and minimum spans. When we worked our way around to the west elevation, we looked at how could we best offer an in-and-outlook or a crenellation or a setback to the building? So we put the majority of the west elevation right on the setback line, and the grid allowed us to pop out a small portion of the building to go into the setback by two feet. So building grid was one determinant to the request for setback. I think the other determinant was already mentioned, and that is, we studied hard the developable opportunity at the AstraZeneca site. And frankly, they won't be able to develop that close to their setback. They're maxed out on their floor area ratio or soon will be. So we didn't feel that it was going to be, as someone mentioned earlier, that much of an imposition to the AstraZeneca site. Nathan, do you have something you want to throw in there?
In addition, at that property line, there's a 30-foot water utility easement-
Forgot about that.
-on the former AstraZeneca property.
Which adds to more opportunity for any type of road or path that might be developed on that adjacent property site just have to be setback. So we didn't feel that it was much of an imposition for what was being asked for.
And to add to the large scale of the site and positioning the building, a good driver for the shape of the building had to do with the existing grades. We actually followed a grade line, more or less, with the curved side of our building that allowed us to go to that 45-foot height. We don't have the opportunity to go further to the south or further to the east due to that property and being able to have that large floor plate, upper floor, that is the large part and cell of this building is having that large floor plate.
Can I, let me ask you a question. The area that you're referring to as the grid, this is that pop-out section on the west elevation that's got a kind of salmon-colored surround around a bunch of, a bunch of glass and is maybe 30% of the full length of the building facade along that west elevation?
That, that is the, we didn't present a picture to you, of that to you tonight, but that's generally speaking where the pop-out occurs, where the framed window is, correct?
Okay, so the other 70 or so percent of the grayish and off-white portion of the building is compliant with the 12-foot setback?
That is correct, absolutely.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else have any clarifying question around the setback issue for the applicant before we let them go? All right. So then I'm gonna say that maybe before, let's not do a negative poll on this one because John stated that he doesn't believe, John, are you willing to change your mind based on what you heard, that the whole project meets the site review criteria or not?
No, I think that it doesn't meet the, I disagree with the diminished setback, but otherwise, I'm fine with it.
Okay. So knowing that John would say that unless the setback issue is cured, the project doesn't meet the site review criteria, can you take that down so I can see the whole screen of folks, please? So besides John, is there anybody who also feels that the project does not meet the applicable site review criteria? Now, I'm just negative polling everybody on the board except John. Okay, so with that in mind, it seems like six of the seven members of the board believe that the project meets the applicable site review criteria and that it's compatible and contextual with the existing character of the area and meets the specific criteria in 9214H of the Boulder Revised Code. And to the extent that John believes that it does not meet, it is only regarding the setback variance from 12 to 10 feet on the west side. So with that, I think I'll entertain a motion. Staff, if you want to put the motion language back up. So, yeah, we're going to have several motions, right? The first is just for, yeah. Okay, so the first is for the annexation and initial zoning. Does anybody want to make a motion regarding approval of, recommendation of approval of the annexation and initial zoning? Sorry, I can't see. Okay, John, go ahead, please.
I move to recommend the city council approval of the proposed annexation with initial zoning of industrial general and public for Zero Airport Boulevard and Zero Belmont Drive pertaining to case number LUR 201800059, incorporating the staff memorandum as findings of fact, subject to the recommended conditions of approval for the annexation as provided for in the draft annexation agreement forwarded to the board on July 16, 2020.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, I got a motion from Gerstl, a second from Smith. Any discussion to the motion? Okay, then, we'll make that the motion of the board. The planning board moves to recommend the city council approval of the proposed, sorry, I gotta get, this is a Zoom thing. Approval of the proposed annexation with initial zoning of industrial general and public for Zero Airport Boulevard and Zero Belmont Drive pertaining to case number LUR 20180059. Let's see, is it 59? I gotta make this a little bigger, excuse me. Yes, 59, incorporating the staff memorandum as findings of fact and subject to the recommended conditions of approval for the annexation as provided in the memo. And I'm not going to get this exactly right, because I'm reading off the staff report, but the July 16 memo that was provided to us. Okay, so that is the motion of the board. Call the question. All in favor, well, sorry, we can't do that. David Ensign, we're going to do a poll here.
I.
John Gerstl?
Hi.
Peter Vitale?
Hi.
Lupita Montoya?
Hi.
Vera Silver?
I.
Lisa Smith?
I.
Okay. And, you know, I'm calling you sort of in order that you appear on my screen. So the fact that all three men got to go first and then the women is in no way a sexist statement on my part, though I suppose I could have gone backwards. And I will vote aye, so the first motion passes seven to nothing. I'll take a motion on the second motion regarding the site review.
I'll make the motion.
Who's that? I can't see you.
Lisa, it's Lisa.
Oh, hi Lisa, okay, go ahead.
So I move to approve the site review case number LUR 201800060, incorporating the staff memorandum and the attached site review criteria checklist as findings of fact and subject to the conditions of approval recommended in the staff memorandum.
Great, and somebody can jump in with a second and just say it, because I can't see anyone.
I'll second.
Okay, David Ensign has seconded Lisa Smith's motion. Is there any discussion to this motion? Friendly amendments? Hey, hearing none, I'm gonna repeat the motion and make it the motion of the board. The planning board moves to approve site review case number LUR 20180060, incorporating the staff memorandum and the attached site review criteria checklist as findings of fact and subject to the conditions of approval recommended in the staff memorandum. Any amendments to that motion? And I'll call the question. David Ensign?
I.
Lisa Smith?
I.
Vera Silver?
I.
Lupita Montoya?
I.
Peter Vitale?
I.
John Gerstl?
Aye.
Harmon Zuckerman says aye. So the site review has been approved by a six-to-one margin with Gerstl voting against. Congratulations to the applicant. That concludes this public hearing. Okay, so we're going to move on. You know, I think I mentioned earlier that, as I was looking at the agenda, that we had a people who wanted to speak to the public hearing items, including cleanup on the land use code needed to speak after those items, but that cleanup item's been rescheduled to August 20th. So now we're kind of in the home stretch of the meeting, and we're going to do matters from the planning board, planning director, and city attorney. The first matter is from the planning board. Do we have, actually, before I do that, do we have staff waiting to make a presentation on the Greenway CIP?
No, it's completely informational. If there's any comments, you can send them directly to Katie Knapp. Her information is in the memo. The Greenways CIP goes in front of the Greenways Advisory Committee on August 19th. So if you have any feedback, you can just transmit it directly to Katie.
Okay. And who's our Greenways Advisory Committee rep this year?
Peter.
Who is?
Peter.
You have anything to add, Peter, since this is your bailiwick?
Do not right now.
Okay. Have you taken your CIP tour yet? Is Greenways Advisory going to tour any of these CIP projects?
You know, I think because of COVID, there won't be any CIP tours this year.
Okay. So maybe a virtual tour where you give a, give a map of where to go and folks can go on their own time on their bikes?
A self-guided tour with like audio, maybe, like an amusement?
Will that be fun?
Okay. You can put little numbers and you know what to click.
So the next item is a matter for the planning board. Received a request from city council for two board members to participate in a series of discussions about CU South. There will also be members of RAB and OSBT, two members from each of those boards who will be invited to participate in three meetings with city council to talk about the preliminary engineering for the 100-year flood mitigation concept and upstream concept as well. I would like to have David Ensign and John Gerstl be our two representatives, and they have been both heavily involved in the CU South and the flood mitigation issues since it came to us for the first time on planning board. And David is very dedicated to the follow-through on the guiding principles for CU South that we got enacted into the comprehensive plan update in 2017. John, obviously, is a water engineer and has a ton of experience and interest in this. And the last time that city council asked for our input, David went and spoke to city council, and John spoke on his own behalf as a member of the public. So they both paid their dues. But with that, you know, I don't want to just bulldoze any other planning board members' desire to be in this mix. And so if anybody disagrees or would like to nominate themselves, I wanted to leave some room for that.
Hey, Harmon?
Yeah?
Want to ask for recusals for this item as well?
Oh, yeah, good idea. Is there anybody who feels that they need to, sorry, I see Lupita smiling, who needs to recuse themselves based on the fact that the applicant in this matter is going to be the University of Colorado?
Yes.
Thank you. Does, Hella, does Lupita need to speak any more to that, or is that sufficient?
I think she can just say that she's recusing herself, and then that means she can be part of this discussion. So maybe she can turn her camera on and her audio, and maybe we text her or send her an email when the next item is up?
Yeah. Okay, Cindy, would you take care of texting Lupita when this discussion is over?
Yes.
Cindy, can you do that? Thank you. And actually, you know, I have an appointment. I just taught in the Masters of the Environment program for the last semester at CU. And so, though it's not my primary job, I am, and I don't, I'm not an employee, but, you know, I guess 1099 I will be by CU, so maybe I should recuse myself as well. Does that sound right, Hella? If I'm teaching a two-credit class?
And, yeah, I think that sounds right.
In that case, I'm doing some individual consulting research work for CU. It's all remote, and I'm not there physically, but I will be paid by the University of Colorado, so perhaps I should also recuse.
There's going to be no one left.
I know.
I have no relation to CU at all. How's that?
Advisory Board for the Media Architecture Lab.
Wow.
In CU.
And now we're down to three.
So sorry to spring this on you, Hella, but as our council, should I sit beside as well and Peter, or what are your thoughts?
You have, it sounds like you have a contractual relationship with CU as well.
I don't. I'm not paid. It's a volunteer position.
And what exactly is the appointment for again, Harmon?
So I am a instructor of, you know, visiting faculty, kind of professional faculty appointment in the Masters of the Environment program. I teach master's-level environmental studies classes. I teach one so far at the university. So I'm not a member of the standing faculty, just the scrambling faculty.
And is that a current situation?
Yeah, I'm still on the roster for teaching again next spring.
Yeah, I think that falls under a contractual relationship, and I think for now, I would recommend to recuse yourself. And then we can, if more items come up, we can take a closer look at the code and reevaluate with all the details in mind. and reevaluate with all the details in mind.
Well, I'm sorry that the damage was already done and that I spoke for such a long time before recusing myself.
And Peter, I think you are, I think you are okay. I'm gonna take a brief look. Because it doesn't sound like you're employed in any way. And it's a voluntary position, is that right?
That's right.
I'm thumbing through my code if you.
Hello, I'm just gonna mute and turn my camera off now since we already decided on me.
Shall I be you for the next couple of minutes then?
Is Lisa staying on? Because I'm putting this text message together so I can do it real quick.
So at least until I get the chance to talk to Hella further because I am currently paid by the University of Colorado, which by definition is a contract. So I suspect that I should also step aside, although I'll wait till as she pages through to confirm that.
Okay.
Well, and I do think whoever is recused will actually be able to hear us when we end our discussion about CU. They, we can't hear them when they mute, but they can still hear us, just having had to recuse myself via Zoom before. Doesn't mean we shouldn't send them a text, just I think they'll still be able to hear.
In the interest of full disclosure, I should say I studied at CU and I taught there 20 years ago. But, and I audited the course there last semester. But right now I have no contractual relationship or compensatory relationship with them.
Yes, that doesn't amount to a conflict. And I don't believe that Peter has a conflict either.
And I audited a course last semester and we'll audit one next semester. Especially.
Okay.
So I'll go ahead and turn off video and mute Hella for the moment?
Yes.
Turn off the video as well. Great, well, I guess I'm, as co-chair now, going to lead us through the remainder of this discussion. So I think that Harmon proposed that John and I be the, be the, take this on, this interface with city council. I'll just say that I'm perfectly willing to do that. I'm not currently a liaison to any other boards, so that's kind of nice in the, and the use table subcommittee stuff's been winding down, so I could probably take that on since I don't have that kind of an external facing role at this point. And John, you want to comment on what you think?
Yeah, I'm interested to do it as well. And I don't see any conflict or reason why not, except for the time involved, but I'm able to do that.
Peter and Sarah, what do you think?
Yeah.
I'll speak first, if you don't mind, Peter. I think it would be great, I think between the two of you, you bring both the issues related to water management and the experience with the, in the years leading up to where we are now to talk through some of the issues that both were in the, I don't remember what the material, what the framework was called that was approved by planning board two years ago, but. I'm sorry, David?
Guiding principles in the.
Guiding principles, thank you, I'm sorry, I just didn't remember. And the conversation that we had at our last planning board meeting about this where we all identified various and sundry concerns about the step-by-step nature of what would need to happen in, from both an annexation and a planning perspective. So I think it'd be great to have both of you there.
Peter? Support it. All right, so I guess that we can, John, you and I can take that on. I'm looking forward to working with you on that.
Do we need to vote on this or?
I don't think so, right? This is just a matter of us all kind of agreeing. It's not, I don't think there's a vote needed. So if that's good, then let the minutes reflect that. We'll do that and then we can invite our recused members back. I don't know what.
We could unmute them and have them come back.
I don't know.
Can we do that?
Yes, that's fine. They can, we can get them unmuted.
Okay. Come on back, Harmon.
And Lupita. Lupita. Hey.
So Sarah, I heard you say that we'd be able to hear, though we wouldn't be able to speak or be heard. And actually, that's fine because that's the way recusal works when we're in conference chambers. We sit in the anteroom and the TV's on and it's showing us what's going on in the meeting and we know when we can come back. So for once, the virtual is just like the real. So. Sorry?
Minus the snacks.
I missed the snacks.
That bowl of chocolate.
Through the Halloween candy from 2019 by now.
I know, I'm gonna have to go through that closet when we get back.
Okay, so I will forward David and John the meeting dates and times. There are two at the end of April and one in the beginning of August. And I've already discussed those with them, so I'll just make sure you have that in writing. And now we'll go back to matters. Are there any other matters from the board? Okay, then I'm gonna jump over to planning director matters.
I'm from staff.
Actually, yeah. We would like to, as staff, like to, we've been giving you our packets on Fridays, about 13 days, almost two weeks before our planning board meetings. And we would like to propose something to you if we could possibly move that date to the Monday, so now 10 days before the actual meeting. It's, 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 it would help us a lot as staff to get the, to have a few extra days because a lot of the staff that are in charge of getting those packets to you are often in these meetings late Thursday nights. And then they're working all through Friday trying diligently to get these packets to you. And a lot of times they get the information to me by four or five on a Friday and then I'm working late Friday night. And it would just be nice if we could, and I know you're waiting anxiously on a Friday night to get those packets and read it all the way through the weekend. I know you're just dying to get that information. But if we could maybe push it out to Monday, that would help us a lot if it's okay with you guys.
Yeah, and thanks, Cindy, that completely slipped my mind. Another contributing factor is that our business rhythm. We review projects on three-week review tracks and our DRC comments go out to our applicants on Fridays. So we oftentimes have case managers who have been up late at a planning board meeting have five to eight sets of DRC comments that they need to coordinate and get out to applicants by Friday end of day and then also a memo packet. So it would actually be a big help for our case management team.
We talked about this at an agenda setting meeting on Tuesday. And I want to mention to the board that I had mentioned to Cindy, you know, the difference is whether we get two weekends to review the packet or one, you know, why not just take until Tuesday? Because a Monday deadline for production of the packet might mean that staff would be working over the weekend to get it out on Monday. And why not just take another day? We'll still have nine days to review the packet before our hearing. Nine days, 10 days, still just one weekend, who cares? And Cindy said, well, actually, I've got something else that has to be done on Tuesday, so I really would like to get it out of the way on Monday. So I just want to thank staff for the, you know, when, there are a lot of lower-line staff that don't attend city council hearings, don't attend planning board hearings every week, you know, every time they're scheduled, like Cindy does and Hella and Charles. And so there are certain members of staff who are really working on, you know, just a constant schedule where the hits just keep on coming. So that was a really good example of how even sometimes offering another day is more trouble. And these guys are working really hard for us. So I'm 100% in favor of allowing you to do what makes your life easier within reason while we still have enough time to review these packets. And thanks for all your efforts.
Thanks.
Any other? Or can we just allow that change?
I can certainly live with it, so.
Great.
Thank you. Yeah, and Harmon, we'll just memorialize that in our administrative processes.
Perfect. Hope to never see those. And then any other? Okay, Hella, thanks so much for catching me and the CU issue. Really appreciate that quick thinking. And that's about it for matters unless, well, we already called for planning board matters. So we talked about the packet, that's the other item in matters. So is there anybody who needs to debrief from this meeting? Cindy, do we have a calendar check?
Oh, well, let's see, we have a meeting, today's the 16th. Our next meeting is July 30th. And I think that's it, so, yeah.
Okay, great job, everybody, really efficient meeting, 7:53, we're gonna adjourn.
I did.
Awesome.
Have a good night, everybody.
Night, everyone. Great job, Jean.
Great job, Cindy. Maybe we got one off without like any weird hitches?
Yeah.
So we should start recording.
Oh, yeah.